Okay, good evening and welcome to our council and committee of the whole meeting for the second of December. Bienvenue à notre réunion de conseil. Deuxième de samedi. To open this evening, I would welcome councillor Larabee to read our land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we meet today, I would like to take a moment to recognise the importance of the land on which we are gathered. La municipalité Nippesing West reconnaît avec respect que nous sommes réunis sur les terres ancestrales du peuple Anishinaabe, de la peuple traditionnelle des premières nations Nippesing, Tamangomé et Doki, désignées par le traité Revenant Huron. Nous honorons leur vienne historique avec le territoire et nous valorisons leur contribution considérable au façonnement et au renforcement de nos communautés. We do this to reaffirm our commitment and responsibility to work reconciliation and improving our understanding of local indigenous peoples and their culture. Thank you.
Merci, councillor Larabee. Number two, declarations of pecuniary interest. Councillor Rivard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 5.1 or 4.3?
Okay, and you filed the appropriate paperwork with the clerk?
Yes.
Yeah? Yes, thank you. Very much appreciated. We do have an addendum for this evening. Madam Clerk?
It is moved by councillor Farrin, seconded by councillor St Louis. Be it resolved that the addendum for the council and committee of the whole be held on December the 2nd, 2025, be adopted as presented.
Questions or comments? All in favor? It's carried? And adopt the agenda for you?
It is moved by councillor St Louis and seconded by councillor Farrin. Be it resolved that the agenda for the council and committee of the whole be held on December the 2nd, 2025, be adopted as presented.
Great questions or comments? All in favor? It's carried? Thank you. Next to number four, delegations and permission. So we are fortunate to have a delegation from the North Minnetville Community Centre to introduce us all to their facility. I would like to welcome Joan Mercer-Fryer on behalf of the group of volunteers from the Minnetville Community Centre. Thank you.
Please let me know if you can't hear me. Madam Mayor, councillors, CAO Pilon, staff members and members of the public, ladies from the southwest corner of West Nippesing. Our delegation tonight is from the community of Minnetville. We are about fifty kilometres from Sturgeon. And perhaps I don't have to say this, but even though we're close to the village of Noalva or closer in the municipality of French River, we come often to Sturgeon. We shop, we work, we visit the doctor or dentist or the emergency department at West Nippesing General Hospital. Many of our kids come here for high school and sometimes even for elementary school. Many of our elderly residents come to O Chateau when they need long-term care. Half of our community, as we will see, is in Ward Eight, Le Vin, North Minnetville, and we're likely to have Josh Farron as our councillor. Can I have the first slide, please? Oh, it's there. So, my name is Joan Mercer-Fryer and I'm the president of the Minnetville Community Centre Committee. The committee which manages the Minnetville Community Centre, a building which the municipality owns at 7.98 Highway 64 in the busy hub of North Minnetville. Just kidding. Our committee was recently incorporated as not-for-profit with a lot of assistance and patience from councillor Farron. Thank you so much. Although we are newly incorporated, our committee has been in existence since 1995, when the Minnetville Fire Hall and Community Centre was built. When West Nippesing acquired the building during amalgamation in 1999, the committee continued to manage the building with the blessing of West Nippesing. I mention this because, as I understand it, other community centres in West Nippesing are managed centrally through the municipal office. So in this respect, we are unique. We are also unique in that the Minnetville Fire Hall, number eight, and the Community Hall are situated in the same building. I'm here tonight with other board members of the community centre, with members of the Women's Institute, as well as other Minnetville residents. We're here to request funds for some minor improvements to our centre and to request an agreement between the municipality and our committee, which will outline how we can request capital improvements in the future. I believe council met at the Minnetville Community Centre early in your term, but let's take you on a brief tour to refresh your memory. The fire? Yep. So the fire hall has three bays, one fire truck and one pumper truck. Community Hall is wheelchair accessible. The fire hall and community hall share a full kitchen, excellent washroom facilities and a wheelchair accessible bathroom. The community hall is a combined event recreation space which seats 200. A new communications tower has just been installed by NetSpectrum to provide a tower for the fire department's repeater signal and to provide Wi-Fi to residents within range of the tower. The lot upon which the fire hall and community centre is situated is also the site of West Nippesing's recycling depot for this part of the ward. Could I have our next, please? Now, if you were to drive through Minnetville, which on the map is North Minnetville and Minnetville, you would wonder if it even was a community. There's no downtown, no stores, no gas stations, no post office. Visible or not, the answer is an emphatic yes. We are a real community. However, we are a border, not a border town, more a border village. Prior to 1999, the unorganised communities of Faulkner, Hallow and Loudon were managed under a local roads board. So that means two townships in Nippesing, one township in French River. When amalgamation came to be in 1999, our community was divided right down the middle. The townships of Loudon and Faulkner became part of West Nippesing and the townships of Hallow and Martland became part of French River. I believe that, for convenience, the boundary between West Nippesing and French River was chosen to be the same line between Nippesing District and Sudbury District, which had existed in 1999 for almost a century. But it wasn't until amalgamation that we really felt divided. Even today, Minnetville residents think of our community as all four townships. And we have many reasons to think so. These four townships share the same address and postal code, Minnetville, Ontario, P O M two K O. Our own Minnetville magpie, which is a worldly news, is dedicated to Minnetville stories and events. It's only distributed to residents in these four townships and has been in publication for almost forty years. Next, please? Minnetville residents share a well-documented and rather interesting history dated from 1895, when Alexandre Boivier, the help of an indigenous guide, travelled over the west arm of Lake Nippesing to establish the first settler colony on what came to be known as Shanty Bay. We know now that by the time he arrived here, Alexandre Boivier had changed his name to Cyril Manette. Alexandre was a longtime friend of Louis Rial, having been at seminary together in Montreal. It is now understood that Alexandre Boivier had been in Manitoba with Louis Rial. When the Manitoba Métis leader was hanged for treason in 1885, the Boivier went back to Montreal and before long Alexandre Boivier changed his name to Cyril Manette. It is believed that Alexandre adopted Louis Rial's wife's maiden name, which was Monet. So ten years later, when Alexandre Boivier arrived on the west arm of Lake Nippesing, he was known as Cyril Manette. This history has been commemorated with a historical monument installed in Minnetville and initiated by community members who are actually here tonight. In any case, Alexandre's assumed name, Manette, eventually became the name of the new settlement, Minnetville. Cyril Manette was responsible for getting townships surveyed, getting roads built and lobbying government to fund the cuts, which separated at that time Shanty Bay from the rest of the western. Cyril Manette also became the first mayor of what was then called Martland. Many more French-speaking and English-speaking settlers followed in the next several decades, including my own great-grandfather and four of his brothers who arrived here between 1912 and 1920 from Michigan, USA. In the 1930 Depression, many homesteaders from southern Ontario came for free land and in the 1950s, Mennonites also settled here in Minnetville. The area around Shanty Bay where the most French-speaking families lived became Minnetville. Much later on, the area a few kilometres north of Shanty Bay where the most English-speaking families lived became known as North Minnetville. And of course, since 1995, the Minnetville Community Centre has enabled us to all get together in our community. Next, please. Building the fire hall? Or next, please? Building the fire hall and community centre took a long time and a lot of effort. When the Minnetville Volunteer Fire Brigade was formed in 1975, volunteers came forward from all parts of Minnetville. Here is a photo of members of the Minnetville Fire Brigade standing with the North Bay Fire Marshal. The photo was taken in 1978, when the firefighters made their first big purchase, a 1946 truck from Halebury. Later on, they were able to buy a 1964 pumper truck from Hamilton. According to meeting minutes from that time, grants were scarce. They did eventually receive a $10,000 grant from the Ministry of Northern Affairs, but the fire brigade relied on donations from households and businesses and on fundraising events, such as dances, bingos, raffles, corn and pig roasts, etc., just to cover expenses and to buy equipment. They used a building at the Ministry of Natural Resources lot on Lake Nippesing to house their trucks and equipment. Next, please? From the very beginning, plans were made to construct a fire hall and a community centre. The lot where the building now stands was donated by the Brubaker family. However, with no grants available and volunteers struggling, of course, to be both firefighters and fundraisers, plans for a fire hall and community centre were put on hold for the next seventeen years. Finally, in 1995, with funds from the Canada-Ontario Infrastructure Grant, the community was able to build the combined fire hall community centre that we have today. And the community literally built it from scratch. Contractors from the Minnetville community excavated the lot, built the foundation, framed the building, made all the decisions. Even with the grant, the community had to raise 10% of the money provided by the government, more winter carnivals, talent shows, fundraising dinners and raffles. Many of us here tonight participated in that fundraising and have been involved since that time. So, four years after the community built the building, West Nippesing assumed ownership of the building. Next, please? Oh. In the last thirty years, our community centre has been the heart of Minnetville. It is the only place where the community is able to come together. Present and former residents, summer residents and visitors gathered here for community dinners, showers, weddings, funerals and celebrations of life, parties, church services, games for adults and children, community yard sales, family reunions, meetings of all kinds, events by other groups, even elections. Next, please? The municipality has paid for heat insurance, snow plowing and maintenance of the building. And our committee, as I mentioned, was allowed to keep the proceeds from fundraising events and from private rentals. Proceeds from events and rentals have been used to buy and replace as needed tables, chairs, curtains for the stage, dishwasher, stoves, dishes, freezer, cleaning and bathroom supplies, utensils, glassware, sound equipment and gym equipment. The committee also pays to have the centre kept clean. We have been really satisfied with the arrangement up to now and we are very grateful for the blanket support we have received from the municipality. Thank you. We would not be able to operate without it. However, we feel that our informal arrangement with the municipality has some shortcomings. Next slide, please? Although our arrangement meets day-to-day needs, we have no way to ask for capital improvements, even minor ones. Our kitchen needs some upgrades. We lack an exhaust vent above our stove, as you can see there. And we need a larger kitchen sink. And with summers getting hotter, an air conditioner or cooling system for the kitchen is, in our opinion, a must-have. With the next budget deliberations about to begin, how do we make our wishes known? Who do we talk to? As a recently incorporated not-for-profit, we'd like to work within the municipality to discuss how we can leverage that into ways we might be able to access grants for more major improvements, such as a cooling system for the hall. Next slide, please? We see signs that the Minnetville community is growing again, slowly but surely. In recent years, we've seen former residents coming back to the community after retirement. Even apart from that, we believe we are seeing an influx of newcomers to the Minnetville community. I'm sure your planning department could attest to a substantial increase in the number of new lots created in this ward in the last few years with the corresponding increase in revenue, in tax revenue. Minnetville Public School, which is located almost across the road from the community centre, Fire Hall, is in the district of Sudbury. Of course, it has had at least a 50% increase in school population. I must admit, though, that the catchment area is large for that school. We hope that we can entice some of these newcomers to join our volunteer fire department, which is sorely in need of new recruits. A situation we share with many other communities, as we understand it. On that note, our committee and the Women's Institute group are willing to do everything we can to support and encourage our firefighters and to get the word out to the community that we need more volunteers. And I just want to mention tonight that we do have Randy Soder with us. Randy was a fire chief for a long time. Next slide, please? We believe in community. We believe that when folks meet face-to-face, things can happen. Somehow, our differences seem less important than what we have in common when we get together. Next slide, please? Thank you again for supporting us and thank you in advance for considering our two requests tonight. A special thank you to Mayor Crochard for helping us put together this presentation. Happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. It's really nice to see all open the floor for questions or comments in regards to the community centre. Councillor Farrin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank you, Joan, for your presentation and all you've done over the years. It's really a great story. And, you know, a lot of people in West Nippesing forget that Ward Nine reaches all the way down to
Eight.
North of Eight.
Don't get me wrong.
Thank you. That Ward Eight stretches all the way down to North Minnetville. And I don't know who decided 25 years ago to draw a line right through the middle of your community, but it hasn't prevented you from making this centre one of the most successful in West Nippesing and French River. It's been a great contribution. I know how important the building is to all of you and I think we can work together to address those issues so that you can continue to serve, you can be.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Okay, I will take an opportunity. I started attending events at the Minnetville Community Centre actually prior to the election during the campaigning period and I have been absolutely struck by the warmth and the welcome that I've received every time that I've been there. You know, we've met with your committee, first with councillor Crochin and then with councillor Farrin. There is a lot of dedication and a lot of love of community. And, yeah, I mean, it's great because we see a lot of people who have made a very long drive tonight to be in council chambers with us and that's a testament to the importance of this facility in Minnetville. And it is interesting where it does serve residents of West Nippesing. It serves all of Minnetville and we will often see both the current and former mayor of French River at your events. We'll see members of council from the municipality of French River as well. And, you know, it shows that the community does cross that border and cross that boundary. I think that the facility is one that's very important in this part of the municipality and I think and all of the volunteers, whether it's with the committee, with the Women's Institute, volunteer firefighters past and present for their service to the community. And I look forward to seeing you again next Saturday. The supper is that, until you go and experience one of either the harvest supper or the Christmas supper at the North Minnetville Community Centre, you really don't understand quite the feel of the building. The room is packed. You know, the Christmas supper, we do not count heads because officially I would have to report if we were over capacity, so I don't count heads. But, you know, every chair in the house is taken and there's a handful of women in the kitchen who somehow feed 200 people. And, you know, it just is a great time. I will leave it that. I could talk about how much I enjoy my time when I come down to see you for a long time and I'm really happy that we've gotten to the not-for-profit status for the committee because I do think it makes it much easier for the municipality to work with the group in a more formal arrangement. So we will be discussing your request and that piece at a future meeting. But I thank you for your time and I thank everybody who showed up today to support you.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. And I just want to mention, if anyone is interested, you're all welcome to the community Christmas dinner. The details are in the newsletter there.
I got my ticket. Edith has some in her purse, the $20 it is and it's yeah, save room for dessert is my recommendation.
Just for the people, if I may, Madam Mayor, just for the people that do not have this piece of paper, when is the date for your Christmas supper?
Yeah, it's December the 13th, so a week from Saturday.
Okay.
I gave one to Melanie and I wasn't
Alright, because you are televised and hopefully people will rush in.
Not too many, because a lot of Okay, thank you. Great evening.
I will take a break. If any of you would like to leave and not watch the rest of the fascinating meeting of council, we are very interested. I'll take a break and allow you to leave the room. If you want to stick around, we do break officially at eight o'clock. Okay?
Speed and watch. I think we've got some tapers. Thank you.
We've, we really made Oh, okay. All right. There we go. Nice to see you.
I wanted to answer this gentleman's question here. The line was drawn by surveyors in the eighteen nineties.
Yeah, but they didn't have to draw the line when they did amalgamation.
And that is, that's a function.
Yes, yeah, they couldn't have drawn like this, like the
That's funny.
Yes.
Okay, so moving on, uh, we'll move to, uh, committee of the whole five point one general government, five point one point one. Uh, consideration of the engineer's report for the Poirier Drain twenty twenty five. Uh, we do have on the, did you want to give a preamble at all, Madam Plurk, or?
Um, actually, uh, I think I had provided a memo, uh, which is fairly explanatory as to what took place, uh, following the first consideration about a month ago. Um, Mr. Miller is here with us tonight, and he will, uh, follow up on any questions that may not have been addressed in my random.
Okay, thank you very much. Um. Thank you. Um, okay, I with that, I'll pass the floor to, uh, Joel Miller, uh, from Case Smart and Associates.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, uh, members of council and staff. I assume you're all able to hear me.
Yes.
Excellent. Um, as mentioned, tonight is a continuation of the consideration of the report that I filed on the Poirier Drain under the Drainage Act. Um, you probably recall, um, the extended conversation and discussion that was had on October twenty first about that report where I presented the details of the project history, the proposed work, and a summary of the overall costs. And as mentioned in the memo that was included with the agenda package, the topic of assessments is is not the focus of this, um, continuation of the report consideration. Um, tonight's, um, focus would remain on technical aspects of the proposed drain work. The primary update that I'll provide at this point is just a quick summary of, uh, following the council recess on October twenty first, there was a a very, uh, important and useful landowner conversation that involved everyone, uh, nearly everyone in the watershed and all who attended that October twenty one meeting. We continued the discussion, um, downstairs. And coming away from that discussion, it was clear that there was some remedial work that needed to be done to rectify um, one of the existing municipal drain ditches. That work was completed. Um, our surveyor verified that, uh, the old, um, drain E is now functional the way it needs to be through, um, the advanced construction of the proposed, uh, drain E ditching that is included in my report. There's some minor touch up work that needs to be done, but functionally that ditch is online, um, with the capacity that it needs to have. And so with that remedial work, um, completed, um, as and this this notion of, um, completing that remedial work before further consideration by council was discussed at that October twenty one meeting as well as as a possibility that that has materialized. And so the report is now back in front of you for further consideration or questions. I think for now I'll, uh, limit my comments to what I've said. I'm happy to field any questions. As we continue our discussion.
Great, thank you. Now, so you'll all recall, and it was a month and a half ago now, that at the end of October, we did get a very thorough presentation uh, on the proposed changes to the Poirier Drain that are, uh, addressed for this application. Um, at this time, uh, I'm not sure whether any members of council have any questions. Uh, I'll I'll go to members of council first if there's any further clarification, and then I will open the floor to, uh, members of the public. Okay, seeing none. Are there any members of the public that would like to give a presentation? Sir, please, podium, uh, and, uh, present your name and address, please.
Dan Swartzen Truber, one twenty two Marineville Road. Um, so I didn't get to talk to you at the last meeting, obviously, but, uh, Joel laid it out pretty good. Um, can you see me, Joel, too, or? Yeah, good.
Yep.
Um, just wondering, the report is kind of inaccurate, um, for certain things that maybe should be added. And I just wondered if it should be adopted before the report's actually complete. Um.
Wait, would you be able to elaborate elaborate on what you mean by, uh?
Uh, just just as far as where some of the crossings are and how long they are, uh, can that stuff be built as you go, or should it be in the report first?
In which crossings are you referring to in particular?
Uh, so the field crossing at Station five twenty on Drain Eight
Mm hmm.
Ward Station seven ninety four, um, would need lengthened. It should actually maybe run from five twenty to eight thirty nine. And that would just be for uh, future fencing, et cetera. Instead of me repetitioning later and
Mm hmm.
the other seven, eight years for
Right. Yeah, no, let's avoid another seven, eight years. So lengthening that section of pipe you're referring to, um, roughly how much longer would it need to be compared to what's in the report?
Uh, it would be completely from the five twenty to the eight thirty nine.
Oh.
You probably have from five twenty to, I'm guessing, six hundred. I don't have that.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so what I could do is just, uh, what what you're suggesting then, where the existing design proposes about thirty five meters of uh, pipe drain. And then upstream of that, for the next two hundred and fifty meters or so, uh, it's proposed to be an open ditch along the property line. What you're asking for would be for that open ditch to be, um, converted to a pipe design?
Just abortion, yeah. Um, obviously at my expense.
Mm hmm.
I can argue that because it's for my convenience.
So, I mean, in general, the situation would be there can be minor adjustments during construction, uh, that can be accommodated sort of as we build the drain, um, as long as there truly minor adjustments, you know, like, uh, you know, within a few meters of what's proposed in the report. I think to convert that length of an open ditch into a piped system would be more than can be, uh, sort of accommodated uh, during construction, uh, based on the current report.
Exactly. Um, that that's one section, um, another section.
I guess what I'll say, though, is that the concept to have that section of the drain be a ditch is more or less, it follows property lines. So, you know, where a drain runs through the middle of a field, we'll often put it in a pipe, so it doesn't inconvenience farming operations, obviously. But where we're along the property line oftentimes, these drains are ditches, uh, and this ditch design is something I was pretty sure you and I had discussed, but, um.
The length just wasn't discussed, but yeah, the property line is followed seventy five or eighty percent of the south line.
Yep.
But, um, a portion of it is in the bush where potential fencing.
Oh, okay.
Just instead of having fencing cross open ditches, et cetera.
Oh, yeah. If we have to put in a short section of pipe where there's a fence so that you can have a fence and the drain, that's the sort of thing that can be accommodated.
So I didn't know if you want to discuss that further, uh, before adopting this report. Um, another section would be, uh, also Drain A, Section five point four in your report, near the area of Station two fifty one. Um, we originally discussed taking that rock out that I had started blasting already. So that's on the, uh, west side of the property there on the north, south ditch at Station two fifty one.
Yep.
So in your report, it shows using a buried pipe instead, crossing onto a neighboring property, which then you'll have a catch basin and outlet with rodent gate, et cetera, which is more maintenance. So I'm happy to keep blasting that as a straight line the way it's almost complete. Which will end up being cheaper in the long run. Once again, my, once again, my expense.
So there is, there is an option written in the report to allow for, uh, blasting of the bedrock that's there. Um, as in lieu of putting in the short section of pipe ditch or piped drain around the bedrock. So that option is outlined in the report as something that could be sorted out through drain maintenance at a future date. But that would be something that can be accommodated through the current report.
Okay. And then also on Drain E from, uh, Station zero to around Station one forty, which is where we, uh, just completed a ditch a month or two ago, whenever that was.
Yep.
We didn't account for a crossing there, but we need one. Um, I went over it with John Lindley a little bit, which he suggested doing a petition later for that crossing. Uh, this petition already took a reminder. So
No.
Just, uh, wondering again if we should just try and put it in this report before it was
So, yeah, so, uh, the area where in addition, oh, I apologize, I'm speaking over someone.
Sorry, I I would just like to to intervene, um, at this point and ask you a question, Mr. Miller. Um, the the changes that are being requested by the petitioner here, are they substantial enough that you need to take like it that it should not be in front of council today? Like, are there changes, um, that need to be made to this report before this drain passes? Or are is everything that he's asking about, um, able to be accommodated under the current report? Because if there's not any point in council, um, sitting and listening to the negotiations of the minutia of a a drain plan, um, if if what we have in front of us here cannot be approved tonight, um, then it would be better for us just to know that and for, uh, you know, the you to work through that process and bring it back when it's ready. If this is, if what's being presented to us tonight can be approved and the the requests that are being made can either be handled uh, underneath, uh, sorry, under the current report or as a separate something that doesn't take eight years.
Mm hmm.
You know, then then I'm happy to proceed. But if if at this point, it seems obvious that 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 can't be accomplished tonight, it's better for us to know and and move on and let you go back and do the work and come back a month from now or or whatever the case may be. So that's my question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's an excellent question, and I agree. Um, if, so I've heard three requests. Uh, of the three requests I've heard, uh, two of them can be accommodated through the current report the way it is. The third, it's a little unclear to me exactly where you're referring to, Dan. If it cannot be accommodated under the current report, there's a new for simple installations of new crossings. There's a new process under the Drainage Act that allows us to add an access culvert as needed after a report is adopted at a later date through what's called a minor improvement under a new, uh, regulation that was brought into effect in twenty twenty one through the Drainage Act. So from what I'm hearing so far, all that's being requested can be accommodated under the current report.
Thank you.
Okay.
Continue, Chris.
I just have one more uh, concern that wouldn't really be an accommodation for me. It would mostly be for my neighbor to rectify his issues. Um, so mainly um, Drain E again, Joel, at seven oh five to nine twelve. It should also be enclosed in your report. Like, I know he has standing water issues. It's a little mysterious. Open ditch up against the barn foundation. In the report, it shows moving the ditch half a meter from his barn, which isn't going to solve the issue. I would say close that ditch also, which is the top of the drain. It would be the smallest pipe needed and, uh, that we don't need a cross culvert in his yard and no more foundation issue.
Yeah. So, um, that is an idea that was not discussed, uh, prior to getting the report filed, and the current report would not be able to accommodate that change simply because it's an extended ditch enclosure. So if there's an appetite for that to happen and there's a willingness to pay the increased cost on the part of I expect, uh, the landowner where the enclosure would be taking place or some combination of landowners in the vicinity, then the reality is the report should be referred back to me to make these changes. That particular change, everything else that's been discussed can be accommodated either through the Minor Improvements Regulation. Um, nothing else, or it's already provided for through my report and the language related to bedrock. So um, enclosing a portion of the drain, um, what the report does include near near the garage at the upstream end of Drain E is moving it away from that building as was discussed onsite with the landowner. So the report's been faithful to what all the onsite discussions were during preparation of the report. This new idea to enclose that section of drain is an idea that could be looked at. It wasn't raised. Um, and to do so would require referring the report back to me for, uh, cost estimating, redesign, and, uh, bringing it back to council because that would be something that I'm not able to um, accommodate through a minor improvement. That's the way the regulation is written. So if there's a serious appetite for that to happen and willingness for it to be paid for, then the report should be referred back.
I would look, I would cover the cost. It would be up to Mr. Poirier wants that through there, or if he's happy with an open ditch up against his foundation where it's, uh, currently, but I would cover the bill. So it's up to him if he wants to pursue that with you.
Mr. Poirier, sorry, probably at this point, uh, you would want some kind of concurrence for Mr. Poirier at this point, uh, that you would be interested in having that section in physically enclosed. I'm trying to
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure that it's going to be a a good project and not have some issues that need resolved in the upcoming years, like, let's just do it right and be done with it.
To Poirier?
Yeah, yeah, actually, it would be something to, for sure, uh, discuss, which I am willing to go towards that idea.
And, um, that change would be, so at that point, if that is something that needs to be discussed and incorporated into the report, then this report would need to be referred back to you?
Yep, hundred percent.
Okay, and if it's being referred back to you already, um, you'll address with Mr. Swartzen Truper if there are any of the the other three the three other amendments that you were
Well, there's some minor ones that I won't, yeah.
Anyway, so if if any of those are ones you feel should be reflected in the report, you'll address those at that time as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, so I don't think I don't think we need to vote to refer it back. Okay, so i- in that case, um, are are there any other members of the public who are in attendance tonight that would have, uh, some uh, just before we refer back, Mr. Poir- uh, are you finished?
Yeah, a lot of this is Yeah, a lot of this is, is stuff to go over with Joel, I was hoping to. Uh, chat with him before.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay.
I appreciate the time.
Okay, Mister Sekin.
A quick question, um. I'm sorry I couldn't make the last meeting, we were tied up.
Okay, sorry, I just need, I know, I, I know who you are, but I need you to just to.
Yes, again, very much for my point.
Yes.
Um, at the last, uh, anyways, I, I wasn't able to come. Um, I know the report and we received a report and work has been ongoing over the years. When is the work scheduled to be finished and, and over? That's my question.
Mister Miller, I guess that all depends on when council approves the, the drainage plan. But that's why we're doing it in the winter, I guess.
Cause I know there's still work to be done. Downstream, but we haven't seen any of it yet.
Okay, what's the plan for implementation or what's the timeline once it's approved by council, please?
So, uh, once the report would be adopted by council, which, you know, I'll be endeavoring to provide an updated report based on some of this new information, um. Very shortly, within the next month or two, then there'd be a court of revision a month later. So we're still looking at, I would think, construction during twenty twenty six.
And all of the work has already been allocated. To um. As far as uh contracts and bidding is already covered, is already.
No, uh, no, what would happen is once the uh. Report has been finally adopted, then the work would be advertised for bids. And, and then it would depend on contractor's schedule as to when, when they'd get out there and get going. But I would expect it's reasonable at this stage of the year to think that it will get built in twenty twenty six.
Also, not, uh, not that I'm looking for extra work, but uh, if the work happens. Uh, and the landowner is interested in doing the work that's actually going to occur. Where the drain goes through on his property. Um, he has, would he have the other, the opportunity to actually. Uh, submit for that work?
I think that would be a, a question that would need to be discussed with the municipality at the time of. Facilitating the tender process and scope of that tender package. So it wouldn't necessarily be discussed now, uh, but once there is a report that's adopted, the tendering and the details of how, how it's constructed and who constructs it could be, would need to be discussed with the municipality and comply with the procurement by law.
Fair enough. So my question then would be to council as to. How can somebody get put on the list to actually be received, to, to receive these tenders?
Um, uh, Madam Craddock, please.
So, um, all, all of our tenders are, are posted on our website, tenders over fifty thousand are posted on the Merck's website as, as well. And so they are publicly available for contractors to, to bid on. Um, contractors doing work need to be able to provide uh health and safety, insurance, W S I B and all, all of that as well. Um, depending on the, and I, the, the, the cost estimate, um, we also look for references that, that uh contractors have done similar type work. For similar type organizations before and, and uh we look for that as part of the, the tendering package as well.
Fair enough. Merck's website, you said?
Merck's, yeah, it's on our.
Hey, thank you, Mister Sekin, and I'm Mister Poirier.
Uh, Martel Poirier, eighty eight Rainville Road. My question is, uh. As you know, uh, Mister Miller, uh, we have a. A good portion of the ditching. Already excavated as we speak now, right?
Yes, yes, some of the work that's proposed to be incorporated through the drain report has already been.
Like. Like for the la- like from the last eight years since this started, like throughout the years, little bits got done, whatnot, right, from. Let's say, uh, let, I don't know what kind of number I would give, but would you agree on about like thirty percent, twenty percent of the ditching roughly?
Yeah, for sure. It's a sizable portion of what's supposed to be incorporated. Yep.
My, my question is, is when this job goes out to tender, is it going to be. Uh, highlighted on the sections that are already excavated? To give a chance for other contractors. That they know to bid accordingly. Right? That there's a, a, a volume of the work that is already done. You'd like specified in your tender station to station and whatnot.
Absolutely, yes. That will be, that will be clearly communicated in the tender package.
Okay. So, so as, as the package, like the tender, the scope of work that you have in this book will obviously change? Like amount of meters excavation to be done on cer- uh, each and every drain?
Yeah, because this is the report that defines what the drain is. And then the tender package will define. What work on the drain has yet to be done and needs to be done. So you're a hundred percent right, there will be.
Okay.
A difference in the total number of meters yet to be dug.
Just, just to kind of notify other contractors, right? Because. A contractor that, that is not familiar of what's going on, it will bid throughout the whole volume of. Excavation to be done for the whole project, right?
Hundred percent, I agree. That'll be clarified on the tender.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mister Poirier. Uh, any other questions at this time? Okay, so council is going to refer. Uh, the report back to Mister Miller. Uh, to work with Mister Schwartz and Truver on the, the one major change that needs to be accommodated in the report. And, you know, just making sure that there's nothing else in. Um, what Mister Schwartz and Truver brought forward that does need to be like, once you, you get a kind of better look at what he's, uh. He's talking about and we'll see this back uh within, you said, hopefully about two months.
That's my goal, hundred percent.
Okay, um, so with that, I'll, I'll end the discussion on the, the drain for today and I know that Mister Miller will be in touch with you, Mister Schwartz and Truver. Uh, and we will see you all back here uh in a couple of months.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on from a full house to an empty house. Thank you very much. Move on to five point one point two, which is the Accessibility Advisory Committee Terms of Reference. Mister Yidong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I uh did have, uh, I did have a chance to attend the actual, um. Committee meeting where the terms of references. Discussed and some minor terms were requested. Mrs. Craddock has, has put that together and also. Has uh updated our accessibility. Our five-year accessibility plan and Zippa's coming in. Um, I know there's challenges with the committee meeting. Um, we're not meeting for a few months. But uh, meeting is fairly fruitful and I think there's, you know, consensus on the documents you should be before.
Are you able to, because we don't have a copy of the old terms of reference and the new terms of reference, or you can highlight. The kind of high level changes, um, that were made. Yourself, or you can pass it on to Miss Craddock if you like.
Yeah, I think I'll pass it on to Craddock on this piece. They were, they were very minor, but uh, go ahead.
With, with the terms of reference, the, the only changes fit in the uh. The, the kind of one, two, three under, under purpose and that there was some duplication in the, in the, the old terms of reference and, and there was just some awkward language. And so it really was just a smoothing of the language, that's all.
And that's it? None of, none of the meat and potatoes, the terms of reference have changed as far as representation or not.
All of this is.
Thank you. Uh, so we, we're on the terms of preference right now, we'll move to the accessibility plan as the next um item on the agenda. So I'll open the floor to questions or comments. Uh, specifically on the terms of reference for the Accessibility Advisory Committee. Okay, seeing none, uh, does that need to come back as a resolution for council to approve the update in terms of preference? And that will happen for the next meeting. Okay, thank you. Uh, next item uh is the Accessibility Advisory Plan twenty twenty six uh to. Twenty thirty, uh, and I had uh brought this forward, I believe, as an agenda request item a, a couple of months ago that uh. We were, it was twenty twenty to twenty twenty five and we were nearing the end of twenty twenty five, so I'd like to uh first off, thank staff for uh. You know, getting this, uh, getting this looked after in such short order, uh, and uh, Mister Kula.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I um. The committee did meet, as I said, and did provide some input on what their priorities uh would necessarily. Moving forward within the five-year plan and focus will continue to be just the O A D A accessibility. Uh, they mentioned a, a few projects in and around the municipality of West End, the same. Uh, some accessibility within uh some of our recreational facilities such as arenas. With respect to um. Uh, some options that uh that could be considered and that will continue to be considered through future meetings. And um, again, just to focus on, on overall improvement, improvement of our current facilities to be uh. Compliant with the act.
Questions or comments, uh, Councilor Pauveret?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor. As for the, what we discussed at meeting. Uh, I know mostly was the uh. Uh, for the wheelchair accessibility, watch the games. In Sturgeon and Werner, is it? Is it going to be addressed like? Pronto or?
Yeah, the, the focus is, I, I think it was very clear from the committee perspective what the focus should be, so um, that is continuing to be discussed with regards to exactly what options we do have. Um, I have, I'm in the process of obviously touring all of the facilities and having a look at. All birds' eye view exactly what the issues are and I'm going to go to Werner and view the platform as we had discussed in the committee meeting. And uh. In future, I'll be continuing to do that uh at the Sturgeon Falls facility to see that they want, uh, that looks like as well. So. We continue to have uh some of those discussions with regards to potentially helping these funding to do that uh through uh. Through basically meeting our commitment to the accessibility plan and, and clients with the legislation. Okay, that's your question, uh, Councilor Pauveret?
Uh, yes, and I'd love to, if you could give me a call, I'd like to meet you there. I've got pictures of a different sunbraid. Very simple. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, uh, Councilor Pauveret. Just, uh, I have a question if I may through you, Mister Yidong, first. Mister Poirier. Did we not have something on the budget last year for the viewing platform at? The arena? Am I, i- if I'm remembering incorrectly, you can let me know, I, I'm just having a nudge in my brain that I thought we had discussed.
It was um scheduled initially to be addressed at the Sturgeon Arena through the uh sports and sports recreational facility grant we had applied for.
Um.
The uh getting a viewing platform at the Sturgeon Arena is going to require some design and some, some additional work because of. The constraints with space, uh, with the current seating in the lobby area. And the lack of space, once you go into the uh arena side on the uh north side of the rink. Um, so we were hoping to address that by. Uh, having a complete redesign of the front lobby to allow accessible viewing platforms. Obviously, we weren't successful with the grant, so we will look uh. At, at more funding opportunities, because we, there's going to be requirements for additional work. As for Werner, I did discuss it with the Councilor Pauveret in the past and. Suggested we look at uh potentially what Sunbury has done. I know the viewing platform that's at the arena in Werner right now is, is dated and there's uh. That other ways of, of looking at new technology to address that, but again, we're going to have to look at space, there's a, an entrance uh on both sides of the uh. The current viewing platform and, and uh. We have to look at slope and, and all that, but we, we had intended on addressing the, the uh issue in Sturgeon, but we're unsuccessful with funding. So we didn't operate.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Lervy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, years ago, I used to be on the Accessibility Committee and um, we, the provincial government had mandated us. We start uh, having, whilst first to have an assessment of all our buildings. In West End, which Mister Ben Alge did. And then after it. If we had started by twenty twenty five, did extend it to twenty thirty. Now, are we on target where all the assessment? That were, that was done by Mister Ben Alge, or we are, or did the government scrap this? This mandate on us? Cause we had, we had to invest. Some years, millions of dollars on into our building the way that they are to bring them up to coal.
I wouldn't say, uh, um, you know, the A O D A is still a priority at the, the provincial level. Um, but my understanding is that um for uh. Facilities, uh, it's really covered under the uh building code and not under regulations under the excess of A O D A, the act itself. Uh, and, and what it really says is that when you uh undertake major renovations onto a facility, then you must operate through the standards. Um, that are outlined in the A O D A, um, but. Until such a time that you undertake those renovations, you are permitted to operate with what you have, is that?
That's correct.
Assessment of the legislation?
And we do submit a yearly report to the province on A O D A and we are in compliance with the A O D A Act. Um, through our building condition assessment reports, each building has a component of A O D A and what's going to be required over the next ten years. And as the mayor alluded to, once we get into major renovations. Uh, or new buildings, then we have to adhere to the uh, the standards. Um, that being said, we try to do some A O D A improvements on a yearly basis. Um, so if we're looking at automatic, automatic door, um. New uh washrooms, uh, anytime we look at. Uh, investing in one of our facilities. A O D A is, is top of mind.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lervy. Other questions or comments? Uh, Councilor Baimi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, just the uh. In the report, prior. Prior projects. Is, is, was, is that the list of items that were identified for the. Two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-five potential projects?
If, if I may, those are actually ones that are from prior to that time, which is why they're in that bit of a different format, but I didn't want to lose sight of the work that has been going on. For a long time within, within the municipality, so those are ones from the actually previous plans that had been, have been completed. Um, the stuff completed in this last plan is, is actually in the section just before that, you can see completed, completed, stuff like that, yeah.
And there will be a new list for twenty twenty six to twenty thirty that's going to come up, or are we using the current list that's there?
So the, the list that, that's there is, is sort of again from those um bu- building condition assessments that um. Mister Kulan mentioned, so that's, that's the work that has been identified already through those assessments of, of things that need to get, get tackled. Now, as council sets its capital budgets and sets its, its plans on facilities, that will then give us the timelines on, on. What um, what year to expect those various different, different pieces to, to occur. And, you know, as, as mentioned in my memo, as discussed earlier, the, the committee has really stressed, um. You know, concerns of the arenas as well as just looking at it, making sure that, uh, asking council to remember how, what facilities are used the most and, and to address the facilities. That have got the highest use as they're kind of trying, as you're trying to prioritize the capital work that needs to occur.
Okay, and that review has been passed through the uh Accessibility Committee?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, no more questions.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Okay, uh, seeing none, uh, again, thank you uh for the work on, on getting this updated. We know it's important work to make sure that uh all members of our community are able. To spend our facilities as possible. We also know that these conversions, uh, especially with the number of facilities that we own, um, are very expensive. Always, always a balancing act of fitting in what we can do within our means, um, and we will continue to keep that top of mind as we're looking at our, our capital. And our budgeting over the next uh couple of days, um. This will need to come back to council to be adopted. Yes, next meeting? Thank you. Okay, everyone, we have five point one point four real property disposition. So we have several items under this category and we will open with five point one point four point one, Borgo Street. There's C A O.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. So this is a, I think, a piece of vacant land that's very familiar to council that has has come to, back to to council for more or less for an update, but also potentially a decision. Our clerk instituted a a process where we obtained a professional appraisal. And as you can see, this is the appraised value. It's a very unique property, albeit a waterfront property that is sort of landlocked properties. And that's adjacent to a right of way along the Sturgeon River. And again, I know that this is something that council wanted to discuss a little bit further. And given the valuation, if there's any further discussion or any other direction that council wishes to impart upon staff on how to proceed, if not, continue to have a discussion on it.
Thank you. Did you add anything along the lines of? Okay, I'll open the floor for questions. So comments, Counselor Pelleri?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you. What is the rationale for the valuation of thirty thousand and and can we see the valuation report?
Yeah, like I don't, I don't see that there is a huge issue there, but it's, again, I think you'll see that the gist of the report is very much that there were really no comparable properties to this particular unique piece of land, according to the appraiser who was specifically chosen as an out of town appraiser to give us a a fair valuation and a neutral evaluation on the property. So again, I think that is the, that was the the cited difficulty in offering an appraisal on this piece and where this particular organization landed on that appraisal was the fact that there really, it was very difficult to assess a proper value on that piece. I know that there, you know, there is potentially more information out there with regards to potential impact and, you know, assessment. And and those are, I'm sure to be discussed and 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 to to be sort of evaluated in a different fashion. But again, this is the way that that our, that we approached this particular situation and trying to get a very neutral and fair evaluation of a very unique property. So in, you know, in brief, that's basically what the appraisal does state, but that report is on record and available at the clerk's office.
If I could ask a follow up question. Well, in future, I would love to be able to see the valuation attached to the because I think it's important for us to understand the rationale behind the evaluation. Having said that, I find it difficult to see how this is such a unique property to value. It's a piece of waterfront property of a similar size to many other properties in West Nipissing that are vacant. So it 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 does have, it is next, it's, I don't think it is, I wouldn't consider it landlocked. It is next to a a road allowance. It may be that the green allowance, part of the road allowance is being used at the moment for pump station, but it doesn't mean that there's not enough space to pass this pump station. It doesn't mean that the municipality wouldn't want to choose to remove the, move the lift station. So it is, can be serviced by a road. And so I find it hard to believe that a piece of waterfront property worth thirty thousand dollars. And and I, when we discussed this in August, first time, Madam Mayor asked if the valuation would take into account the fact that it's a waterfront property and would it count for how it would uplift the value of the neighborhood who want to purchase this? The the value of the total. That's what I understood in front of the conversation we had. So it's, I'm still at a loss to understand how this is worth thirty thousand. I mean, the impact valuation. And this is based on twenty sixteen valuations too. The seventy eight thousand dollar. That's what M P says that piece of waterfront property is worth. If you take the difference between vacant land that is not waterfront and one that is waterfront, the difference is quite substantial. It's more than thirty thousand. By, uh, so I don't understand.
Yes, if I may, just to clarify that, I mean, we we approach this from a perspective of just looking at what is the property worth, not necessarily what will be affect to the potential buyer of the property. So from that perspective, that's really where our focus is, is just to come to a a documented fair valuation. Now, if that is up for discussion and if there is, you know, some flavor out there for some continued follow up on this piece, and certainly if that's the direction of council, there are some options and I'll defer to Madam Clerk here.
Thank you, Mr. Puyol. The, I did discuss with the appraiser that issue that Counselor Fetter has raised about the potential increase. Because the municipality and does not assess properties, M P A assesses properties, he did not want to take a flyer guess at what it might be worth, because M P A has a very stringent formula that they run through to put assessments on properties. So he just, he didn't want to hazard a guess and be out in the weeds.
Thank you for that. Counselor Pelleri?
I think the appraiser is out in the weeds. If we, if we remember not too long ago, we did a lot addition to Monsieur Rivet on the Sturgeon River, which I believe was five meters wide to the length of this property.
The river, riverfront.
This was assessed at forty thousand dollars. Now we have a a full lot at thirty thousand dollars. But they're going to say, oh, well, it's, it's, it's flood zone. Half of it, not even half of it, is is flood zone. So the piece is a hundred, hundred feet wide by a hundred and five feet long, and that's on the short side. So there's ample room to put a house there. The road allowance to go there is sixty six feet. Okay, there's a lift station there in cement. Fine. But the lift station is not, it's not even fifteen feet wide. And to say on the previous report of Monsieur Caroll, we use it to put the, push the snow there as if it's, i- i- it's a right of way. So this lot is way too low by estimation. And and it is an accessible lot. Like, I'm here to represent the taxpayers. If we sell something, we get the max worth. That's, I don't know how this all happened, but if we make the difference between what we sold to Mister Rivet at forty thousand dollars for just the strip and on this one at thirty thousand, which is it's two, a hundred, a hundred feet wide. It's a full lot. So something wrong here.
Thank you. You know, I'll say that your comparison is probably better than the one that I thought of, but when I saw this, I thought of the lot addition that we did on Tammerack Crescent, which was, you know, a triangle shape. It was point zero eight acres. This is this lot is listed at point three two acres. So this piece is four times the size and waterfront, and we sold a sliver of a lot to somebody on Tammerack for twenty five thousand dollars. And here we have a a piece of property that is four times the size and waterfront and will the the risk we have to look at is that if we sell a piece of municipally owned property to a single resident for thirty thousand dollars and they are able to have the benefit of, let's say, a hundred thousand dollar increase to their property value. And I'm not talking about impact assessment. I'm talking if you sold the property to Caroll, we know what waterfront property is worth. This happens to be a fully serviced city lot on the water. If we sell it for thirty and immediately that, the property value increases for, by a hundred thousand, a single resident has gotten a a a large windfall on the the backs of the taxpayers, which is why I asked the question in the original meeting, whether or not it would be account, how how they account for that, that change of property value or that enrichment that the combination of those laws would provide. So I just wanted to support you on that, on that, Counselor St. Louis?
Thank you, Madam. I don't dispute at all that the the total is not good. I think it definitely needs to be higher and should be higher. However, where I do, what I do dispute is we're having a conversation of an individual that might benefit if he decides to sell his house and his house now goes from whatever amount of money and he benefits up. We didn't have these conversations with other people that we sold partials of land. So why are we having it for this individual, right? As for the lift station, we were told by engineers that the list, you cannot drive there, that can't be sold and have a driveway or have a road made to go there. So that's the information that were provided by our engineers, by our experts that are saying, no, it can't be done. So in my opinion, yes, the value is low. So I would agree that maybe we go back and get a different opinion. However, what I don't want to see is us comparing this cell in a way that we're not, we didn't do it for others, right? I don't dispute with you're saying, Madam Mayor, I understand exactly what you're saying. But when we sold that parcel on Tammerack or when we sold that parcel, parcel to on Riverfront, we didn't say how much is that house now going to augment in value? So it's not fair. We shouldn't do it. We just met, and maybe it's because we were new, right? We were newer council at the time. But we didn't say that. We didn't approach it that way. We approached it as an individual is looking to purchase this. Let's sell it. A hundred percent, I agree that to sell something for twenty five and this is four times more and it's only thirty, it's ridiculous. I agree that it's waterfront, so it should be higher. But I think we need to make sure and stick to the proper information that we're going to send out there to our, to to all our residents, because if we're going to we need to compare apples and apples, right? We can't look at something different for other people.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Counselor St. Louis. Counselor Larrabee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I totally agree with council saying we on this one or any other ones that we do sell. I think we should have two more appraisers done on it. So that we would if they all come back at thirty thousand, well, we got the number. So this, this is my, my position on this. And to say we move the the lift stations, that's not quite that easy because this, the municipal is built. All the drains are going into that lift stations, you know, you were mentioning that this a while ago, but but with that being said, I would, I would suggest we have two more appraisers, appraisal done on it. And if if the, and this is all paid by the person that wants to buy it. So if he's willing to to pay for the appraisers and everything, then we should move forward with it.
Yeah, I would put that forward. I would just be afraid of setting precedent that we need to then get three appraisals on every piece of property counselor, and I will put that forward. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could make a couple more points, even even if, if you assume that there's no access because of the lift station, then it becomes a water access lot. And there are plenty of examples around where I live on Lake Nipissing Islands that are only accessible by water. And and I can assure you, there are no islands on Lake Nipissing that will sell for mere thirty thousand dollars. And the second point I'd like to make is how is it that we allow people to use municipal property as their home? And I've made this point before in a, in a previous meeting because it came up in another case, but maybe it's, maybe this is for another.
Oh, be a separate discussion.
Don't understand how we allow this.
Counselor? Hillary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Despite, I was going to just say the same thing. If you, if you say it's not accessible, well, then it's water accessible. It's very simple, but I'd like to see who says that you can't drive that piece of property, the the access rope. It says on the map here, it's called Michel Street. It doesn't have to be a street. It's a dead end. It's the last one. So technically, it'd be a driveway of ten feet. That's all you need. And the thing is sixty six, sixty six feet wide. I, I don't understand. I went there, I saw it, walked it. It's a full lot accessible by rope.
I mean, Madam Mayor, you know, the report is based on the assumption that this is an unusable lot, and I know that Madam Hitting probably has some comments to make on that piece, but that is the assumption of the report. That's the assumption on the appraisal of the report.
So just a comment on the lift station. One, if you were to move the lift station, that would probably cost you more than this property would ever be worth, regardless of the assessment of property. But it's, it's not just that the lift station is there. This is also a a storm drain that is running through that entire property and we are trying to avoid having municipal road drains on private property. So if this does become a private laneway, then we are having issues accessing to maintain that drain for for the future of that road. And that's where the issue of access is at that point.
But could it not be a right of way? It remain or under the ownership, the municipality with right of way in favor of.
Certainly is. It's just a lot harder to maintain right of ways when they're not, when they become used for private access. Like we have a lot of like backyard drainage issues like that where we try to avoid moving forward with that. So we have this one right now where we have full access and if it becomes, you know, someone goes and takes it as their driveway and is paving it or doing whatever they want, then it's a lot harder for us to maintain for future.
Not, no, no. The, the
Counselor?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, thank you, Madam. It wouldn't be private. It stays in the municipal's hand. You have, only have a right of way over it. They couldn't, they couldn't say, I'm going to put the pavement or whatever. It's a, it's just access. You, 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 we are the title holders. So if you want to do something of that piece, then let's go go through the municipality. So
Yeah, we still have what would be a lift station right in the middle of it, so that we need to be able to access it.
How big is the, the, the lift station coming out of the the ground? How big is that, the, the lift station coming out of the, the ground?
Couple meters big. It's a fairly large station there.
Couple meters. So we're talking six hundred feet. We have sixty six feet wide. I'm just saying. Like, my driveway is ten feet at the most and it's six hundred feet long.
Thank you, Counselor Niffel.
Thank you, sir, Madam Mary. So if we disagree at this price, can we propose a new price to you or do we need an appraisal to, and us agree with the new appraisal?
So I didn't hear you at all.
If we disagree with this appraisal, can we propose a new price as, as a council or do we need a new appraisal with a new price?
Well, I, you know, that's a tricky question. I think that would be, um, we would just have to articulate where we land based on current data, based on uh, their market valuation. I don't think anybody's an expert in this room as to uh, what real estate is valued at. So, you know, if, if this is, uh, something that's, that needs to be followed up further, we can certainly look to, as Counselor Larity mentioned, to potentially an additional, um, appraisal or, uh, however council wants to approach this, this particular issue. We really don't have, uh, perhaps the parameters of the actual appraisal need to be sort of clarified with regards to is this usable land? Is this successful? Uh, and then, and then maybe move forward that way.
Um, you know, at this point, you know, we've discussed this as far back as August, I believe, was the first, uh, the first appearance of this item on our agendas. Um, and when the initial report came back as to whether or not that was, uh, viable as a standalone lot, uh, it seemed accepted by, uh, majority of members of council um, that that was the case and we moved forward with evaluation based on the, the best use being as a lot addition. Um, you know, I, and I know that we have some dissenting opinions here as to whether or not that is, um, uh, viable as a standalone lot and whether we want to examine that, but um, I don't want to go down that route if there's not support for that, uh, by, uh, the members of council as a whole, because we move forward on this project and getting the valuation already kind of based on, um, acceptance of the engineering report that we received. Um, so I, I think in order just to move this along, the first question I would have is, um, how many members of council, um, uh, uh, accept the information presented in the engineer's report that this, uh, this property can, does not support itself as a standalone lot? Because if it is a majority, then I would leave that part of the discussion behind and move on with a new valuation. So I would just like to see a show of hands. Uh, there was a report provided by Alan Corral, our engineer, uh, that we all received and I don't have the date of that meeting in front of me, but, um, uh, who would accept the fact that this, uh, lot does not, cannot stand on its own?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Please, Madam Mary. Did, did the engineer say it would, access would be difficult or access would be impossible?
I don't know, because I don't have that in the.
I'm, I'm asking through you.
Yeah, it's true. Uh, I, I would pass that only if somebody has the engineering report that was provided to council. Um, it's not here, so I, I can't find it.
I believe there was something else about setbacks in that report as well.
There was something about floodplains and setbacks.
And the setbacks. So it was a not viable building lot, perhaps, in their part? With challenges to access because of the lift station.
Did you want me just to read the, um?
Because it's nonsense.
Uh, Mr. Correll says, my recommended option would be that the municipality have the property appraised, the abutting owner is willing to pay the appraised value, that the municipality move forward with the disposition of, under the municipal land state process and sell the property. Otherwise, I would recommend that the property be maintained by, be retained by the municipality. Block C is currently unserviced by water and wastewater services. The Micho Street allowance is currently unopened. There are substantial municipal services within the allowance. There is a pumping station. There is also significant wastewater piping and stormwater piping. Uh, the municipality requires access to the area on a year round basis and performs regular maintenance of the pumping station. Area around the station is also used for snow storage in the winter. As noted, about fifty percent of the block in the floodplain, block is in the floodplain in Sturgeon River. Current state of the site access can be seen in attachment five.
Thank you. Okay, so I, I just have a question on the table for council is, you know, is, is the general acceptance by council that this lot is not developable as a separate building lot? And I'd just like to see a show of hands so we can, if we wanna, there's three options. We keep the property. Um, we, I, I, I hear that we are all dissatisfied with the appraisal that's been presented. We do not think that it is an accurate reflection of the value of the property nor, um, in the best interests of the ratepayers, the municipality. So we'll send it back for a second appraisal. Um, and then the, the third option is, is to reopen that discussion, but we do have a report on file from our engineer um, in, and which did address the things such as floodplain setbacks, uh, and the access to the property. So like, yes.
Um, Madam Clerk, I, I, I hope that I'm not, um, misleading, but again, with the, the being an unopened road allowance, if council closes the road allowance, it automatically then becomes an undeveloped lot, right? We, we close that road allowance, then it just goes away. That is, so away.
That is correct.
Well, we, but then we still own, then now we do own a piece of property that's landlocked.
Correct.
And there's now no purpose to it because nobody can get to that piece of property except for that property owner. And we haven't increased the value of the property. And, yeah.
Um, you had, uh, to remind me, you, you had mentioned setbacks before and the setbacks and Samantha can, uh, Ms.
Willock.
Willock. Ms. Willock would, um, concur that I did the calculations based on the area of the lot and there, you would not be able to achieve the eighteen meter required setback from the water and the seven point five meter required setback from the, uh, rear of the property with maybe with about twelve meters of, of working space.
Are the setbacks the same on R one, R two properties as they are on, um, rural shoreline residential?
All water, all lots that runs on water regardless of what their zoning is requiring.
Thank you. Counselor Rehard.
Unless, unless you're felt by a firm item. A minimum.
Uh, baby. Counselor Gagne. Oh, I saw you kind of maybe wanting to put your hand up for a little while. The counselor still.
Uh, I agree with that, or Fedan, Counselor Collard. I think, uh, I think there's use to that piece of property. Uh, I think there's water access. The other thing is it's not, that's not the only property that, that butts with that piece of property, the property owner on the other side as well. Uh, who might want to add to their property with this piece of land. Uh, I, I'm not a technician, but I know in front of our house, we have a lift station. A full road is about feet away from the lift station. So to have plows go by, all that type stuff, that close to a lift station, I'm sure if there's a a laneway to access the property, it wouldn't be an issue, uh, in my opinion, from what I see in front of my house every day. And, uh, that's probably about it. I don't agree with the, the amount of, as Counselor Fedan said, it's, it is water access at the end of the day. Counselor Rehard mentioned there are minor variances that can be applied to this and I don't think, um, I don't think the value that we have here, and I think there's use to the land. Um, and also, again, it's not the time, but I don't know if I have to put in a, uh, agenda request or if it's something that we can direct staff to come back with because it is related to the issue, but, uh, the discussion around not to have here, but to have near future about uh, individuals using public property for private uses, I think should be coming back because this is an example of that place.
Thank you. So I still don't really have. Counselor Gagne.
Madam Mayor, can I make a recommendation? We either go back and evaluate company to find comparables, because I, I forgot about the fit.
Yes.
We're also evaluating, uh, property on Chomping on the river also.
Yeah.
So maybe if we can use those, if it's not the same, but at least use those. And also the Tamarack property that we sold on, uh, uh, for a lot addition on, in that area. And maybe ask the current, uh, praiser to maybe come back with comparables, uh, leaving behind that, that the lot can't be sold and it's landlocked and all of that. Just find comparables for the same amount of a size lot. And, and at least if we can come back with that and if we're maybe not satisfied with the, uh, revision of the evaluation, well, then maybe we can see, seek a second opinion after. That would be my recommendation to move this out forward. So, thank you.
Excellent. Um, how, my counselor.
No, yeah, just for clarification, I just want to clarify, I guess, understand what Counselor Gagne, you would like the appraiser to take it back without the constraints.
That's correct.
And, and, and give a value if it didn't have the constraints that were outlined in Mr. Correll's report.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's my.
And, and, you know, with a, with an on to, yeah, as a lot addition, how does it increase that, like, the, I'm sorry, the way that I think is that a, a building lot in town, a fully serviced building lot in town is worth a, at your standard size, whatever that is, hundred meters deep and thirty meters longer, whatever. Making stuff up. And then if you then triple the size of that lot and you put it on the water, what is that empty lot worth? I, I don't, I'm not worried about what the improvements are on the, on the currently owned piece. I'm talking about the value of land. So you have a certain amount of land that the, uh, the applicant currently owns. Um, this lot addition would triple at least the size of his property and give him waterfront. So tell me the difference between a lot of this size, this size, like it's vacant, and a city lot of the same size, fully serviced? Because we're going to go onto a new file, uh, at Tomico Road and we have one acre unserviced waterfront lot um, with valuations over two hundred thousand dollars. And so that is, that is where, you know, we, we do need to make sure. So I would be in agreement with, um, uh, Counselor Gagne's suggestion to, to get a new, uh, appraisal done. Um, I would add to that, that as part of that staff report, I would kind of like to see, uh, some comparables of things that we have recently sold. So, um, when you look at the statistics on the, the Riverfront property, the Tamarack property, um, the pricing and, and what those, so, so that we can see that there, there is some kind of balance or fairness or equity in, in the pricing and, and I know that they're all a little different. But, you know, when you have Tamarack at twenty five and then this piece at thirty, to me, that shows in the, the Riverfront one, I've forgotten about as well, but I just. So who would be in favor of that? Getting a new appraisal and coming back, uh, and seeing where, where we're at at that point.
With no restriction.
With no restrictions.
Same appraiser or a different?
What?
Miss, uh, yes.
That's the other question. Why do we go for an appraiser out of town? We have some here that are licensed to appraise, I think. Right?
Yeah.
Um, thank you. Um, I will be frank, uh, given the circumstances of this lot and the, uh, probably, I guess, the concern around the table that I had noted before, I thought it might be prudent to seek an appraisal from someone with no, uh, ties to the West Nipissing area. The same was, uh, approach was given for the Tomico property as well.
And how much, uh, an appraisal like this one, how much does this cost?
Five hundred dollars.
Is there more than one appraiser in town?
There are real estate agents, uh, who do opinions of value.
Yeah, what appraisal?
Uh, I, I don't know that, uh, I believe there's one that's in training in town, but I'm not sure. I don't know what the qualifications of the persons that generally obtain the opinions of value. I don't know what their accreditation for on paper.
Thank you. Counselor Fera.
Thank you. They also be asked to be in the valley as a thing of some water access only though. Given the fact that also someone could park, uh, on the street.
Or on that road allowance.
I'm sorry?
Or on that road allowance.
Yeah, park and walk to their property. You pee, so.
Okay, thank you. I gave them marching orders. Is everybody satisfied with those marching orders for, for, for Counselor Rehard?
I do that too. I just have an idea because I was hearing a lot of concerns about the accessibility. Oh, if we went with an appraisal for, an appraiser from out of town, why don't we just get a, a, if an engineer opinion as well, or is that should not have left fielded? But, no, it's just I'm hearing these concerns and to me that kind of makes sense. If, if we went with an appraiser from out of town because of some sort of concern, then if we dive in this deep into it, we get that second opinion there too, because there seems to be a lot of concern as to whether or not that accessibility determination was valid or not.
I don't know what to say to that question.
Just letting it all there because.
I don't have the answer.
Just have an idea.
Um, yeah, I mean, I.
I think we can discuss it. I'm not sure that the science changes, but again, we'll certainly discuss it and see, um, what the possibilities are. And go for it. I think first step is potentially to just, because this valuation is very much based on this is undeveloped land. That I want to just make that clear. That's why this was a unique property and the appraiser came to that figure. So that was the information that was given to the appraiser based on obviously the report that we had gotten. So if we're looking at, you know, we can just go back to the, this current appraiser and just change the parameters or at least, uh, get a second opinion on perhaps what, uh, this potential valuation would sit at if it is in fact, a usable lot, serviceable lot, all of those pieces. So I think we can still have a discussion with regards to the original report and see if we have any glaring concerns there as well. Commit to that.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, move on to the second. Oh, it's breaking. Can I get a mover in secondary for recess, please? Counselor Gagne, Counselor Fera.
I am looking for my. I'm using. I'll just go to the other one.
I'm sorry, who is the mover in secondary? Counselor Gagne and Counselor Fera.
It's moved by Counselor Gagne and seconded by Counselor Fera. At approximately eight fifteen P M, a motion was tabled for a ten minute recess.
All in favor? Karen, thank you.
Karen, thank you.
Hey, welcome back after our break. Uh we're still in general government. Uh five point one point four point two of vacant municipal land lack to me. Oh, sorry. I would like to pass it over to you, Mr. Pinal, or for an over.
Yeah, so the the property in question is, uh there was, there's a letter of intent attached. It was received to purchase the land uh described as uh as such, uh the proposal is to construct a single family dwelling on the property. And the purpose of the reports provided concerning the property and the seek directional council on the proposed declaration of the property as surplus to the municipality. It's an area of two point one acres. Properties bordered by Lagde Mill East and Marlow Road West. And there's a a fairly extensive history here. I won't get into too many details, but if there's any other questions. Essentially where we're at.
Uh questions or comments? Um I do have a a question in regards to kind of just procurement more on a general policy basis. You know, when we get a letter with an offer to purchase, I guess there's a concern that you know, what should determine whether or not we sell to an applicant or just declare the property surplus and put it up for sale to the highest bidder? Not too sure.
There's nothing. And any property council has the option of to um selling it by tender, sole sourcing it. Uh or um yeah, if you do, or or listing it with an agent.
And there's no development constraints on that property?
Yes, it is within the uh the Lake Nibising floodplain, but all of the property down there is, they would have to adhere to the to raising the property or the building envelope above the uh the floodplain elevation and make sure that the window and door openings were above the uh the Lake Nibising floodplain.
Other questions or comments? Uh councillor Resto?
I don't have much experience, so I don't know the answer to this question, so I'm just gonna ask through you, Madam Mayor. When we and when we have larger pieces of land like this. Does it have to be sold as one?
Uh no. It does not. Um this property is actually just shy of the minimum lot size for a rural residential lot, which is one hectare. So this is just a little bit shy of that. So if council wanted to proceed um in the same vein as they did with Tomico. Um where we obtained um an appraiser, an appraisal based on the fact the property be split, same thing could be done here.
I'm just looking at the, I'm sorry, through Madam Mayor. Um just looking at, you know, around that whole point, there seems like there's a lot of uh dwellings there. So just curious.
It it is very densely developed for a rural area.
All all of the lots around that point are very much under size.
And they were done prior to amalgamation by springer township? Okay, other questions or comments? So Madam Clerk is looking for um direction as to whether to get a appraisal on the property? Whether we want to declare it surplus?
That's the first question.
Okay, so the first question is, would we like to declare this piece of land surplus? Okay. The second, uh I mean, we would need to get a valuation one way or the other. And then the uh second determination is uh I guess, the procurement or not procurement, the land disposition policy. There's no restrictions as far as we have the option to sell to an individual. Okay. And so that would be the second question. Do you want to be answered to that question? Tonight, is everybody ready to give an answer to that question tonight? Or do you want to get the appraisal back on the property first? And councillor Fera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appraisal of one uh one parcel and also subdivided and
But you need to get all the services. Herdial our minimum is four thousand square meters, which is an acre.
So could we divide it into?
You could divide it into two.
So two two valuations.
Okay. And then just come back with that and we'll just discuss that at that point uh uh whether how we want to dispose of the property.
Hurt, thank you.
Next, uh five point one point four point three Tomico Road. Uh there's a staff report uh on file. Um and is there anything you'd like to add to the staff report?
No, I know that there were a couple of valuations, uh has two separate lots and then has a single lot. Um so for consideration, obviously. Certainly, the valuations are quite quite high. Either end. The recommendation, obviously, uh the council to carry out the required survey and planning application with a view of selling lands uh by public tender is uh is basically the ask.
Okay, and um I know that there was a request in advance of the meeting for the book value of the current property. You have that available?
Yeah, we have.
Forty four thousand three ten.
How much?
Forty four thousand three ten.
Awesome.
Good. Uh so I guess the the question at this point is uh for council is if we prefer to proceed as a single lot or if we want to proceed with the planning applications that we need to do in order to separate into two lots. Questions or comments on that particular? Shoot, councillor Fera?
It's a simple tools?
Okay, so I'll just take a show of hands who'd like to proceed with um the planning applications to sever the lots and then come back and do the the sale, so two separate lots. Uh thank you. Perfect. Okay, and then five point one point four point four, I know, there's a North Cop, North Coat street road allowance. Separating the road. Uh that was, we've seen this file and Mr. Pinal, sorry.
No problem. Uh so we're we're essentially asking, obviously, for um uh support to proceed with a notice uh of the proposed bylaw to stop up and close the road. So that that would facilitate uh the sale of the property. For a sale price, an appraised sale price of thousand dollars.
And we we still need to do a survey on not selling the whole allowance. Okay, and the survey would then give us the lot size of this. Approximate. Okay, so uh Okay, so you're looking for authorizations? Bring a resolution to close the road allowance?
Uh, typically, a notice of road closing has to be prepared and sent to, it has to be published and also sent to the landowners. We would ordinarily carry out the survey work, so we have a proper description for that. However. Yeah, we have to, we have to get a survey before we can bring a bylaw, give you a description.
Okay, so you're looking for authorization, also to proceed with the survey. Okay. Uh, and that would come as a resolution on the next meeting? No, that would just send you to get a survey.
You can give me direction.
Okay, uh, we'd like to give Madam Clerk the direction to proceed with a survey of the property. Show of hands, please. All you need for today? That will come back in due time, getting over the next step of the process. Thank you. I think you next will move on to the planning committee and I'll pass the chair to, uh, the chair of planning, councillor Saint Louis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Under section five point two, five point two point one, uh, we have the official plan zoning bylaw project phase three. And I will pass it on to Ms. Bullock to provide us with additional information.
Thank you. Um, through you, we have this report in front of you, so. Phase three of the official plan project, uh, which is the zoning bylaw update component. We started on that in the background and before it becomes kind of a, a public process, we wanted to provide an overview of what that process is going to entail. Um, just to make sure that council is aware of what that process is going to be, um, for the sake of transparency. Um, so that's been broken down in here and then the second part of this report. So the initial scope of the zoning bylaw update was to do comprehensive amendment to our current bylaw. Given the significant changes we've seen at a provincial level. And the changes that we're putting into this new official plan, um, the consultants are recommending that we, instead of doing. An update, we actually repeal and replace it. Process wise, it's going to be the exact same, just in the end, we're gonna have. A bylaw with a new number, so it's gonna kind of. Be more modern to the public eye, um, and it just won't be as messy because it won't be as many notes kind of indicating where amendments have occurred.
Perfect. Any questions or comments? Quick.
I just have one on shows. I'll say better. When we do the zoning, is it the same firm?
It is, yes.
We already. When they bid, they bid for both.
That is.
Because I remember when we did in two thousand and six, it was a different firm that did the zoning.
Yes, so through you for this, uh, project, the RFP was for both the official plan and the zoning updates. We will be with the same firm.
Okay, yep.
Any other questions?
I'm saying go ahead. We have that comparison of the current bylaw and the new bylaw, so we know what what changes are being done, so. It's faster for us just to review it.
Yes, of course, through you. Um, even if we do go with this repeal and replace approach, we will still be doing a red line bylaw for council, just to make sure it is very clear where we're changing policies. Just the end result won't have all those notes in it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Say better.
Yeah, Mr. Saint Louis. So they already started. Implementing the new bylaw or revised it?
So through you, um, staff and the consultants have been working because of the changes we know that have happened at a provincial policy level. We know kind of the the key direction that we're getting from the proposed official plan. We've been working to make some notes to our current bylaw as well as. Changes that have happened or come up over the last couple of years. I've been trying to keep track of what those changes need to be. Um, so we've been working to pull together that first red line version. Um, it's just not at a point where it's ready for the public yet.
Any part of the official plan that you might have seen that. You might think it's better to be moved in the zoning bylaw? Just for, because like you know, it's, it's very hard to do a. An amendment to the official plan, but it's a lot easier to do a bylaw amendment. I remember in two thousand and six, it was the big thing. Put the official plan as. Simple as we can and put the, the rest in the zoning, so.
Yes. So we have tried our absolute best to keep numbers out of the official plan as much as possible, just for that situation. Um, anything that's a very strict number, except for very specific instances like the absolute minimum lot size, um, we've tried to keep. To the zoning bylaw. I know there's other items that we've discussed kind of throughout this process, um, that we've said have been better suited, so. We're talking about the additional dwelling units, saying about how many are permitted and which zones will be handled in this, uh, the same thing when we were talking about. The different community commercial uses within the rural settlement areas. Um, that will be implemented through this. I'm sure there's other examples. Those are just the the few that I know we've discussed that are coming to mind.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing that? Oh, do we need?
Okay, so. No, so, um, our planner is looking for direction as to whether council is okay with a repeal and replace. And so we would wanna have a show of hands to indicate that. And then there are. One or two other questions that you'd like clarified as part of this report. That's not the only thing in this item. Right? There was something about process with. Um, planning advisory committee and, and you want answers to it as well?
Thank you. If we could get the the process sorted out now, it's even better. Um, so yes, the three key items would be. If we're okay to do the repeal and replace, it's a comprehensive update. Um, if the general process we've outlined here is good to go and we can proceed with that, kind of a two beef. As you'll see in, I'm just looking here. Numbers four and five in the update process, we've set it out that the planning advisory committee would have a review of the red line number, uh, red line amendment version one. And then council will have that as a separate meeting. If it is council's wish, I believe this is the process that was undertaken with the previous zoning bylaw as well. Um, that could be a combined meeting because then council can hear all of PAC's input, um, and may also just kind of speed up our timelines a bit.
Please will first get an indication on the, on the repeal.
Question or you're voting already? Question?
Question or comment? You do this in week. In the official plan, can we also include the chickens?
I'm using the gal on that one.
We need it.
So with a show of hand. For staff to move ahead with the repeal and replace. It's fine. And. With a show of hand, are we okay with the planning advisory committee meeting at the same time as council? Is that what you were asking?
For the second.
For you.
Sorry, but I mean, the second.
Well, it was.
Section four.
So there.
Well, let's guess. I think the question is, is council okay with how the process is laid out?
Okay, because we only touched on four and five, but is council okay with the process provided to us here today? I, I'm, oh, sorry. I usually vote quick, so I wasn't sure.
I know.
Cause I.
Just through you, uh, Mr. Chair, um, we're getting close to the end of our term, the time it's here and if our. We end up in lame duck status, does that still fit these timelines or are we? Are we gonna be in that period where we're?
Uh, lame duck, I don't believe lame duck applies to things such as the official plan. It only applies to things where financial considerations.
Not adopt a zoning bylaw or an official plan during the late up period.
Well, I just wanted to ask and then what was the, what was the answer?
It does apply.
We are not, we are not permitted to, um, counsel if it's in a lame duck situation, is not permitted to adopt an official plan nor as any bylaw.
We can adopt other bylaws.
Yes, but they are.
So but it's, those are the exceptions, okay? I was wondering why I was wrong.
Yeah, I just, I just asked, so, so with them, you know, and I think with the recommendation or the, the thought shared tonight, that there is an opportunity to combine some of these steps. Which would shorten it, so we have an opportunity to finish this.
All right.
If I may, Mr. Chair, um, the process outlined here will have council adoption in July or August, um. By combining the PAC and the council review, it will shorten timelines up slightly. Um, it won't give us kind of a significant buffer. But hopefully. Anytime will probably help us on this one.
So with a show of hands, everybody satisfied with the process and the numbers provided to us or the dates? A show of hands.
See, sometimes it's.
Back to you, Madam.
Not as easy as it looks. Thank you.
Sorry, hold on, Madam.
All right, if I may, just quickly to clarify, now, we said that we're in agreement with the general process, that process being PAC and council doing a combined review.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I was just reading now. Thank you very much, councillor Saint Louis. Fine job. Uh, we'll move on to five point three, it's for water committee and council to the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, uh, pass it to Monsieur Pino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as discussed at last meeting. Council had sort of tasked staff by the communications team to. Uh, at the behest of, uh, of the chair, put together. A bit of a printed handout with respect to the sanitary. Sewer issue, uh, from a public education study, so they have prepared that. They got some social media lined up as well. Updates to the useful website and public notices and will be, uh, certainly mailing or in the position to mail out. A diagram, a simple diagram to, uh, to educate the public on that piece. So with some key messaging as, as detailed in, uh, in the memo. So I know that, uh, councillor Fellerain did provide. Simplistic view of. Of the process and that's certainly something that we will bring back to comms to, to look at. They did have a. A previous diagram, but certainly we'll, we'll look to review this one to see if it's more relevant and, and a little bit more, um. Demonstrative of the actual issue from all the persons' perspective. So that's essentially where we are here. We're poised and ready. Once, uh. Once you have the package.
So. Just so I understand, like. You're gonna give direction to the communication people. On the wording, what? Get to say it well. Or are they gonna do them themselves? I'd like to be part of this. This. I know, I know the system works. I, I think. Just from that diagram. Think the, the, the words to. For people to understand. I, I sure, I sure hope we're part of this. Yeah, it goes out.
Service, just so according to, uh, to the comm team, they, they have something prepared. Just a matter of, I was surprised it didn't include it in the back. Um, they do have something prepared and ready for review.
Sorry. Yes.
I just, I'd like to say that I think we need to be careful about that kind of tip flowing into the operational side. So our, um, our director of infrastructure with the manager of wastewater. Is working with the comms team so that it's, you know, our, our communications officers are, um, making up the information. Uh, all on their own, uh, in a vacuum outside of the expertise of our staff team. Um, and, you know, I, so I just wanna, I, I don't know that there should be a role. For council in working with the communications team specifically to develop wording, because, you know, it, it's very much that. A division between policymaking, which is our job, uh, and operations or, or carrying out the instructions from council. Um, so I, I just, I don't want us to, um, kind of foray into driving greater per se, and I'm, I'm not trying to be. Um, funny on it, but I just, I, I think that if our, if our staff team. They, you know, uh, Miss Henning understands the issues with, uh, the infiltration of stormwater into our sanitary system and what that means and what that costs. Uh, and, and so, you know, I, I just would like us to kind of, my opinion is to have some. Like have faith in, in the professionalism of our staff team to be able to put out communications that are, uh, relevant and easily understandable by laypeople. Um, you know, and I just, it, it, it just like to caution against moving, uh, too far into the operational side of it. You're hearing, I'm through you.
Well, to this, I would answer you that. Uh, we've been Al, Alga, Almaga made for twenty, twenty-five years. And. To me. Nothing has been done to educate people. So that's why I bring it up. So that's why I'd like to be. Part of it. I'm not gonna tell them what to write. But I want to explain. That picture. What it causes. Give them maybe an example of numbers. The inflow going into the sewer plant when it's normal season. The info going to when it rains. How much to which we release the river? That's what I want people to understand and they're gonna say, okay. My sub pump is connected to that bike. Like, it, it's been like this forever and nobody has done nothing about it. So I, we had one shot to educate people. I want to do it the right way and the honest way that they know exactly what's going on. Okay, Monsieur Resto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, uh, or I believe, I think, um. I agree with the comments made by Madam Mayor. We do have experts. Very, very knowledgeable people on the staff who deal with this regularly. It's not to, not to discount, uh. The, the individual skills and knowledge that we bring to the table, but I think. Like was mentioned, I, I don't wanna get into the kitchen here. We provided. Direction or providing direction to staff to develop information, educational. Pieces that are gonna go out to community members and I, I would be happy, uh, you know, to, to make the suggestion if we can. See a copy of what goes out before it goes out here at the table. And give our feedback and comments. Is it hitting all the points that we'd like to see? But for me, that would probably be the extent of what I'd like to do and, and put in my hands on something. I don't wanna. You know, sit in the office and say, let's do this and do this and put that picture in. But let our staff do it, let our staff develop it, they know what they're doing and maybe bring it back to a future meetings, you can have a, a look at it and write some feedback.
Thank you. Yes, like you, I wanna look at it, but I wanna go further. So, any other questions?
I guess, Monsieur.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would also like to have a report. I totally agree that we shouldn't step. Out of our boundaries, uh, but I would like to have a report because right now we know how many. Soccer truck that we have to hire. To pump our lift station when it rains, it's overflowed, so we have to, the one in field and here it's third. They have to go deliver that in North Bay. So if we could have a report on how much tank load that goes out. Now, and how much tank load maybe in a year from now, the result of this work. So if, if it's positive, then we're going to, but. If it's not positive, then we need to take, uh, uh, more measures, like inspect the homes. Make sure that the water is redirected at the proper place. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Araby. Any other questions? This considering.
Maybe a question to Miss Hennings.
Maybe a question to Miss Hennings, if that's okay. I just, like, where I live, uh, I, my sun pump goes in the ditch because there's a ditch beside my house. How do I know if I have a, uh, a storm sewer available to connect? Instead of putting it to the ditch? How would I know? And if people don't know.
A ditch would be your storm sewer.
I would be the storm sewer?
Example of storm sewer.
Okay, okay. So that's the only location.
Yeah, so that's where it would be going.
It's illegal.
Thank you. Thank you. I heard you for.
Okay, on, on that subject. There's no ditch. Where does it go?
Well, that depends in areas where we have a combined or. Not combined storm and sanitary sewer. So in older areas now where it's combined going into. Combined sewer and that's going to the treatment plant in newer areas or areas where we've done storms for separation. Then you have a pipe in the ground that is for the storm and a pipe in the ground for the sanitary sewer. And as I discussed last meeting, when we've actually been, I think. Working on separating since two thousand. Since, I believe, I think the past twenty years and since then we've actually seen. Uh, a downturn in how often we're having incidences of. Levels being exceeded at the plants and at the lift station. So we're seeing with that separation we're doing, we are seeing a positive impact.
So there's a storm and, uh. Sanitary that goes. To each houses on the new development. Okay.
And in areas of town where we're working on separation. So like all of where we, you know, did John Street. Those were, they're all separated.
Also, so there's two pipes. That goes to each house.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because if I ask the Chair, um, uh, through you, is there a bylaw that specifically? States that people must not connect. To sewage. Uh, like, there, there are some pumps to sewage pipe.
Yes.
Yes, bylaws, it's, it's, it's in the report here. There is a municipal bylaw that prohibits the connection in that. And it's, uh, can result in a fine of two thousand dollars and mandatory, mandatory corrective work. So I, I just want to be clear with you, Mr. Chair, that staff has prepared the material and they're prepared to go through where, you know. Uh, I've part of it. And, you know, from that perspective, as, uh, Madam Mayor stated. It is part of their job to do the social media piece and to really assemble the product based on the best advice from. Uh, from the infrastructure side of the house. So, but I, you know, we can take into consideration this. Document here to see if, if it's a better fit and go from there. But from that perspective. We can certainly provide the packet to you to have a look at it, but as far as. You know, slowing down the process of getting input and, and all those pieces, I'm not sure that that's the right correction, but. If that's something that, uh, council has insisted on. We can certainly, uh, look at those pieces, but from a perspective of allowing staff to. To kind of do the work and, uh, and to put this product out based on your recommendations and direction and. You know, certainly appreciate that as well.
Thank you. Just to answer this. Slow down the process. It's not a big deal. It's been twenty-five years. That thing has been done to the history. Again, I'm gonna say I want to do it the right way. Change things around. That's why there's no rush. We're, we're talking maybe sending something with the, the bills in February. I didn't bring this to be a rush. We got lots of times. We got the December, January. Lots of time to do this. So it's not a rush. Yes, Madam Mayor.
I would just propose that, um, that the, the pieces that have been prepared be, be brought back to council, uh, for review. Uh, I guess at our next Water and Sewer Committee. Meeting, if there's no rush and, uh, if you have input based on what is being presented off that time, things that, that you believe have been missed. Then we can have that, uh, discussion and send staff back with further direction. Um, but as Mr. Pidon said, like, most of it. Has been done and I think that it, it needs to come back to this table. I, I don't think that it's, um. You know, I, I just. Maybe it needs to come back to this. But that would be my recommendation. I'm not sharing right now. You are.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, and next up we have, uh, Community Services. I'll pass the Chair to Councilor Rebar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On our addendum, we had a cashback into the center discussion, agenda request submitted on a council saying we. Uh, do you like the facility here or the council saying we just for the. Explanation for the request, maybe? We can, so we can start, we can start with you. I just wanted to know if you have anything else to add.
Well, so, thank you through, Mr. Chair. At least I asked for this information. Um, obviously, if you all recall back in February, March, staff provided us with some information on the. Uh, basketball court that we're looking at building, uh, behind the school. And at council, we, it was voted against it and the comments. More specific that day was we'd rather see the hundred and twenty thousand dollars put. Towards the building, inside the building, work done on that building. Uh, so that's what I would like to know is what has been done since in the past year and what's. Upcoming, uh, for the cashback community.
Would you have anything to add?
Uh, no, not really. If it's council's wish to have a full report brought back, uh, we'll gladly come back. We can have it ready for our next meeting. Uh, and we can give council with not only a, what's been done this year, but what's been done in the past and also. Uh, a, a, uh, good review of what that building will require in the future. And what it costs us on an annual basis to manage, uh, along with, uh, revenue and, and rentals at that facility as well. So we will give council a, a full, uh, picture of, uh, the Cashby Community Center. I think it's a great exercise. Uh, we heard from our friends from Manetteville. Uh, I'm sure we'll have discussions based on that, uh, community center as well and. And, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, we can put the same type reports so ca- council has all the information at their dis- uh, the disposal.
Thank you. So based on the information I was collecting, Mr. Pidon, I'll open up the floor to questions or comments regarding that. Then we'll just go to vote to see if council does. Back to one, I request such a report. Counselor, Coach C going in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we're gonna add the, uh, usage of. Not just revenue, but also usage.
Yeah.
And can we have like past usage?
Absolutely.
I, I know COVID was probably none, but still whatever we can add and it's. Since, uh, after COVID at least to see what kind of usage that building has been useful.
Absolutely, counsel.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm there.
And that usage will include, um, like feed labor as well.
Correct.
And maybe can you split that up against, uh, so. Paid.
Yes.
Pay usage.
Yes.
Free usage.
Yes. Yeah, you'll see it separate.
You know, we'll have hours of use, but we'll also see.
Yep.
Thank you. Well, that's all. This has got a show of hands. It seems like council is probably in favor of receiving such a report. But just to show the hands. Doing all councils on board and the rest of, all right, thank you. Pass and I'll pass back to Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And that does wrap up our committee as a whole and move on to number six, our regular meeting. And I'll talk a little slow, so Madam Perk can find the right resolution.
Anybody else holding resolutions hostage?
He is moved by Councilor Nickel and seconded by Councilor Fera. Be it resolved the consent agenda for the council and committee, the whole meeting held in December the sixth of twenty twenty-five be approved as presented.
Okay, questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Uh, the six point two, uh, correspondence, uh. Library Board Budget Update. We need to have a discussion on this. Okay, um. Mr. Pidon, I mean, can you like that?
I'd like to defer to my authority. But, yeah, we did have the chance to look at, uh. The submission and then I'll give the floor to enlighten everyone.
Actually, I just included it for, for council's information, um, you know, it, it is the. Third budget submission that we received from the library this year. Um, it doesn't change the municipal contribution, but like I said, it, it does just, it does change some of their other, their lines of municipal contribution. As well, and they've just sort of changed some of their sources of revenue and some of their expenses, but I just wanted council to be aware of it. As it is yet again another budget submission from the library board. For the current year that we're in right now.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments, Councilor Resto?
Are you, Madam Mayor? Is, do we, is there anything? I don't recall this happening frequently like this. Do we have anything for boards that we approve budgets for in terms of? Just them adjusting their budget and sending it in. I know it does not affect our, you know, contribution, but. Just in terms of what we approved prior to what they're doing.
No, I would not expect to see revised budgets, um, all year long and sorry, in November of a fiscal year.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, so this really is included for information purposes only. There is no action of the part of staff. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I, I can just add to, just reassure council that. Um, we have been in touch with, uh, with the CEO of, of the library board and. Have committed to, uh, work a little bit more collaboratively and assist in this particular process because it does seem like it's. It's a little discombobulated and there's some misunderstanding. So moving forward, um, or you can. Certainly expect that we will be having, um, very with conversations with. Uh, with, uh, the CEO and the board to, just to make sure that we're on the same page and that we have a good understanding of how the street.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Nickel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I add on to what you just said about the amendments? Is that okay? The library CEO, she sent me a couple lines. I'll read it to you guys verbatim. Uh, the first amendment to the budget was to make adjustments to the salary line after receiving some input from the auditors. It provided some information on how to budget the salaries and benefits. The second amendment was to adjust some line items due to increasing costs, funding received throughout the year that was not budgeted for and updates to special projects. As much as I tried to budget for the entire year, at the end of the day, they are just estimates. Many things can change in twelve months. Which is why I often need to adjust the budget towards year end. That's what I have to share.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? Uh, Counselor Gonye.
Hey, Madam Mayor. I'm just curious, how do, uh, does the S, uh, employee's salary. Are negotiated or, or increases are decided?
In, in general, they follow our, they're, they're not unionized, um, but in general, they, they do have a, a pay grid. And their grid moves with the same percentage as our U, our negotiated collective agreement increases. They redid their pay grid. A little longer ago than that, the version that I. Um, where they actually had a, a third party, similar to the process that we had done, a third party kind of reset what their grid is and then just, it just moves with the, uh, the collective agreement increase.
Okay, and if, does that come back to council for final approval?
No, it has not, no.
Okay.
Library, the library boards run under, I just want to clarify, the right, library boards run under a separate piece of provincial legislation, the libraries act. Uh, and so the municipality does not have, uh, any direct or council does not have any direct control. Uh, over, outside of appointing the board at the beginning of our term, the board works independently there. Or the same as West Nipissing Higher Mental Services. Um, so they do run completely independently of municipal council. Um, the only. Kind of, uh, input that, that we have is the approval of their request for funding at budget time each year. So when we start our budget deliberations tomorrow, there will be, you know, requests, uh, from the library based on their. A proposed budget, their proposed budget for twenty twenty-six and the only decision point that we have there is whether to. Approve the amount of funding that they're requesting, deny it, or approve and. An alternate level of funding outside of what they, uh, what they have requested. And if we, if we approved less than what they've requested, then it would be up to their board to adjust their budget to. Meet, uh, you know, their revenue expectations, including the, the municipality, but. Outside that initial appointment of board members, um, libraries are completely independent of municipalities and municipal councils.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, again, it was just a, an information piece. Uh, new business, Madam Perk.
It is moved by Councilor Fera and seconded by Councilor Rebar. Whereas municipality of West Nipissing has by bylaw twenty twenty-five seventy-two authorized the use of internet and telephone voting services for the twenty twenty-six municipal election. And whereas the municipal clerk has requested quotations from available service providers. And whereas Intellivote Systems, Systems Inc. has submitted a quotation in the amount of forty-two thousand plus HST. Subject to adjustment for anticipated Canada Post rate changes in twenty twenty-six. Be it resolved that council for the West Nipissing municipality awards the contract for internet and telephone and voting services. For the twenty twenty-six municipal election to Intellivote Systems Inc. in the amount of forty-two thousand. Subject only to adjustments to reflect future changes in Canada Post postage rates. And that the clerk and director of corporate services be authorized to execute the electronic voting services agreement.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor? Carried. Let's play three point two.
It is moved by Councilor Pellerin and seconded by Councilor Gonye. Be it resolved that council authorizes the extension of the municipality's contract with Circular Materials Ontario Inc. Ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to ensure the continuity of recycling services. And be it further resolved that the mayor and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign all necessary documentation to give effect to the extension.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments? Uh, I, I do have just one or two questions because I was a little venture on, on a couple of things. In the memo that's been provided, it says unmanned depots are not part of the service agreement. Is that?
That, that's.
What, what does that?
It, it means they, they go away.
So which ones go away?
So the, the Werner Arena. Crystal Falls, um, one, they, they will now get door-to-door curbside in, uh, in Crystal Falls. The Werner landfill site will stay, but the Werner Arena one will, will go. And then if there is still one at North Manetteville. Um, it will also, uh. Not, it will, it will also not be, uh, maintained, um, so they will be able to, to access at the landfill sites. Or they'll have door-to-door, uh. Um, so, yeah, again, that, that, that area that has got door-to-door garbage will have door-to-door. Uh, recycling collection as well. So, um, down in, uh, the, where, uh, Mr. Mercer maintains the, uh, the garbage collection. They will assume, uh, food box curbside, um, in that area, starting venue one as well.
But only for the houses that are currently served by the contract with Mr. Mercer.
Or if it's expanded.
Do we know how many households? Sorry, this is a bit of surprise and so the, and this has an impact on residents. And I know we may not have. A, a choice as to whether we can accept it or not. I think it's important for us to understand. What the impacts of service levels on residents are, even if we don't have an ability to. Do anything about it. I still would like to, to understand that. So do we know how many households will be in, like. Because we don't have numbers on how many households are, say, using the Werner Arena site. We don't. Because we don't have numbers on how many households are, say, using the Werner Arena site. We don't have numbers on how many households are using the North Minnetville site that will not be served by Blue Bin.
So I mean, I, I do have, and I don't have it with me. We, we do have a number of, of houses that do currently have curbside garbage and that therefore will, you know, have, have curbside, uh, recycling. Um, and the same with, with the Werner, because they, they, there is a portion of the, the folks there that have got curbside, um, garbage and, and recycling. And then the, the Werner landfill does maintain its, its depot. It's just the extra Werner one that, that disappears. But I, uh, who's using them? It is difficult to, to say, you know, who is actually using them because we, they are unmanned. We don't know who's coming in or out of, out of those locations.
Okay, Council Fera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, through you, I, I, I maybe I was mistaken, but I was under the impression that they had to continue the same service as we were offering in terms of recycling. Why are depots like Werner closing?
Yeah, if, if I may, during transition, which was the July first to December thirty first, they had to maintain everything that we had. From January first on, they deliver the service in a, in kind of, it, it sort of becomes a little bit, there, there is some legislative such so that if you are served by a, a landfill site for your solid waste, then you are served by a, a depot at the landfill site for your, your solid waste. If you've got curbside, you, you get curbside. Um, but it is more at, at that point, um, from January one on, their discretion in how they provide recycling services to residents.
Okay, thank you. Council Pelleran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So technically, in January, they could say no more, no more bins in the arena?
It will be done, it will only be at the dump.
But they, they have to be one of the two, right?
Um, so that they, they, um, if we have residents that are, um, only have a landfill access for their, their, uh, solid waste, then they will maintain depots. Now, in our case, they're actually maintaining depots at all of our landfill sites, save actually Muscasung. But Muscasung will also have, have curbside. Um, but they are maintaining, um, these depots at all of our stuff. In some other municipalities, they've actually consolidated and gone down to like just one depot. So I, you know, it, they did recognize that we are geographically very diverse and making them at all of our, our landfill sites, uh, saving us at Muscasung. Um, but yes, they are, it is, it is kind of more, more under their discretion as far as where those depots are and how they deliver services and, and all that sort of stuff from January one on. Um, they've asked that we continue to offer them at our landfill sites and that does make sense for us and our residents as well, which is why we've brought the extension, um, agreement to, to council.
So they could disappear completely, the, the big steel bins.
From the, the Werner Arena, they will disappear completely. At the landfill site, they will stay.
Will stay even if everybody's got a blue bin in the outskirts and?
Uh, at the time where there's nobody using, like where everybody actually has curbside garbage, then everybody gets curbside blue box. And after that, it will become a negotiation on whether the municipality wants to keep depots at one or two sites and pay for that processing as opposed to that once we, if, if everyone has curbside.
It's, it's not a bad thing for them to, to move from the, uh, the arena to the landfill site because I had many complaints, some neighbors, uh, apers flying in the
Yeah.
and people not using the bins correctly. I've seen garbage. I was gonna propose putting a sign like a five hundred dollar fine, but they're gonna move. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, not if I may, Madam, uh, Mayor, on the Muscasing piece, I think Mr. Burton did provide us data of how many lists they had done in twenty twenty five of bins and it's one time. So just, just for information of council on that piece, if there was some contention there.
Council Larabee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, our understanding was with Ford area like River Valley, we did not have garbage pickup. They said we'll add garbage pickup, so the company will, starting January, will follow the same route as the garbage pickup, but they will bring the blue bins. Are we still on track with that or the, because we do have a bin at the dump for the recycling. But they were talking about removing that at the dump completely. Since they were gonna set it up, uh, like they're doing down here.
Uh, you get both. So you, the, those that get the curbside collection for garbage that started in July will get curbside blue box. And, um, at this point, the, the depot is staying at that landfill site as well. We do have some challenges with, uh, some of our private roads in our area. They, they will have, have both, uh, in River Valley.
Thank you.
Council Fera?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, if we decided to start curbside collection uh, for solid waste anywhere else in the municipality, would they need to follow through with recycling collection?
Yes.
Thank you. Council Pelleran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just on the topic a little bit, the cardboard.
That is why.
Just to inform people, the cardboard that they pick up of the big bins, where do they bring that?
Um, my understanding, and I'm not positive, is, is that everything actually goes to a a, a transfer station in North Bay, at which point it's loaded on other trucks and, and hauled to a sorting facility that is, I believe right now that they're hauling to Southern Ontario for sorting.
I'm saying that, Madam Mayor, because I look at these big trucks, pick up the one bin on their big trucks and there's it's cardboard, right? It, it's others. How much of what it must cost to transport this, it's beyond me, right? Anyway, just thanks.
Thank you. Uh, given there are no other questions. Uh, there is resolution on the table, so I'll call that to a vote. All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
It is moved by Council Gagne and seconded by Council Pelleran. Whereas the municipality of West Nipissing has received a discretionary grant and fee waiver application from the North Bay Humane Society requesting waiver of the fees for the Marcel Noel Hall on December fourth to operate a low-cost mobile vaccination clinic. And whereas the requested fee waiver totaled seven hundred dollars as outlined in the memorandum attached. Be it therefore resolved that council for the West Nipissing municipality approved the seven hundred dollar fee waiver for the Northern Humane Society's use of the hall on December the fourth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Council Gagne and seconded by Council Pelleran. Be it resolved that council approved the revised hours of operation for the field and landfill living or field and living landfills as recommended in the memorandum from the Director of Infrastructure on October twenty third to address safety concerns. And, uh, and that from October the first to May the first, the operating hours be amended as follows. Field landfill, ten AM to four PM on Sundays, Monday, eight thirty AM to four PM. Living landfill, Tuesday, nine AM to four PM, and Saturday, eight AM to four PM. And that the updated hours be communicated to the public through the municipality's regular channels.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Council Pelleran and seconded by Council Gagne. Whereas Article four point three procedural bylaw establishes the regular meeting schedule of council. And whereas Article four point four of the bylaw permits council by a majority vote to change the date, place, or time of a meeting. And whereas the regular meeting scheduled for January the twentieth conflicts with council's attendance at the Roma Conference occurring January eighteenth to twentieth. Be it resolved that the regular meeting of council originally scheduled for January twentieth be rescheduled to January twenty second, twenty twenty six at six thirty.
Okay, questions, comments? All in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Council Gagne and seconded by Council Pelleran. Whereas council discussed the Mini-Haha Bay Wharf rehabilitation project at its meeting of October seventh, two thousand twenty five. And whereas the municipality of West Nipissing recognizes the importance of revitalizing Mini-Haha Bay Wharf to support business retention and attract, attraction strategies and support community economic development. And whereas council has identified this project as a priority for investment and has reviewed the financial implications of undertaking revitalization. Be it resolved that council approves the submission of a funding application to the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund for the Mini-Haha Bay Wharf rehabilitation project in the amount of two million dollars. And be it further resolved that council confirms its commitment to contribute two million four hundred eighty nine thousand two hundred dollars towards the project to be financed through a term loan. And be it further resolved that council commits to covering any project cost overrun should occur.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Is that a question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And my, uh, understanding is right, where we permit two point five million on top of if we get the grant?
It's a four point five million dollar project.
Just for the war?
Yeah.
And two millions the next, sorry.
Yeah, I believe so. Council Larabee?
Hey, Madam Mayor, was it ever studied that our engineer to look at? We were to take that part out? Uh, which, we'd be saving two point five million dollars. You know, instead of we, we need a lot of millions of dollars coming up for a lot of things. Spend two point five on one item if we could take that part out. If not, then I guess we'll have to go with it. Was that ever?
I mean, I, I mean, that's absolutely council decision as to whether or not, you know, we fix the wharf or not, but understanding that the impact is, there may not be a, a boardwalk or a warfare anymore. Um, I don't know that it, it's ever been discussed as council as to whether or not, you know, uh, uh, I think it came forward and the, and the fact is we either do it or we don't. Um, I don't, you know, I, I don't know what the, the answer to that question is.
It's just a walking back, right?
And there's the road right next to it, so. Has it ever been looked at?
So we do have, uh, engineers, uh, EXP that did look at it. Um, they provided us with, uh, an overview of the work that's required. Um, we actually also sent divers underwater to examine the condition of the structure. So all of this work has been done to bring us to this point, but this resolution is, is basically uh, part of the, uh, grant application process. It's in, it's in no way tying council's hand to commit to the project. It's part of the process for us to try to obtain the maximum two million dollar grant towards the project. So as we go through this process, once, uh, hopefully we get approved for funding, all the decisions, uh, on the scope and the financing and, and, and what we do at the site will be coming back to council. This is just in support of our application, uh, and the process NOHFC. It's a very prescribed, um, resolution that they've helped us prepare, um, that will allow their board to make a decision on whether we're, we're successful getting two million or not.
If I may, Madam Mayor, if, could that option be looked at even though we, let's say we support your application, but just cut out that part that would cost two point, because there's still the road.
So, yeah, the road and there's, there's also, counselor, there's also issues with the road itself, with erosion uh, that we're gonna have to, to deal with. Um, what we're proposing is also to look at, so we have had a, an estimate and a design provided to us. But, uh, I think, uh, with discussion internally, we're also looking at the, a design build tender uh, to allow companies to give us the best solution at the lowest cost possible. So we're going with the initial design prepared to us by an engineering firm based on the information they were provided with. And so all options will be on the table when it comes to decision time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did you just mention the fact that it is like mission critical at this point where we either need to move forward with some kind of rehabilitation in that area or it, it, the engineer reports say that it is no longer or close to being no longer safe?
We, we have had, um, written correspondence from, uh, engineering, uh, engineers that it is, we're at the critical point now. We have done, um, maintenance work on the boardwalk in sections that were compromised to solidify the boardwalk to ensure public safety. Uh, but we have had some, some, uh, uh, time constraints put on us to do a full repair or limit, uh, um, weight restrictions and, and whatnot. But, um, it is, it is at a critical point at this time.
Any questions or comments? And all in favor? Carrie, thank you. I will need a motion to extend. Who brings the second, Revard and Larabee?
It is moved by Council Revard and seconded by Council Larabee. At approximately nine thirty PM, a motion was tabled to extend the meeting beyond the regular curfew in order to proceed with agenda.
Okay, all in favor? That's Carrie, thank you. Perfect. Would you have an addendum, uh? And, um, the addendum, the information wasn't on the table, uh, addendum. Champlain Bridge Design Review.
It is moved by Council Revard and seconded by Council Larabee. Whereas request for quotations were sought for the Champlain Bridge Design Review and whereas when quotation was received and whereas council concurs with the recommendation, be it resolved that the quotation for the Champlain Bridge Design Review be awarded to Forza Corp. in the amount of fifty three thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Miss, can you just clarify as to why, why this needs review?
Um, through you, this was, um, requested by the MTO.
Okay.
They wanted a third party review of the design prior to moving forward. This is being paid by the, the Champlain Bridge MTO funding, so this isn't something that will be coming out of our budget.
Okay, thank you very much. Other questions or comments?
Does that mean that the MTO confirmed that we're getting a new bridge and not a?
In my discussions with the MTO, we would be moving forward in a full replacement.
Yeah.
Unless this third party review shows something extremely different from all of the other reports, that is where we're going at this point, yes.
Anybody else? Okay, resolutions on the table, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. We're after curfew, so then Madam Mayor will not talk anymore. Except the parade is on Sat- or Friday. Is that right? Friday at six, Steph?
Yes. On center.
Thank you.
It is moved by Council Larabee and seconded by Council Revard. Be it resolved that we proceed into closed meeting as authorized in section two thirty of the municipal act to discuss the following. Quote, the acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Advice that is subject to soliciting privilege, including communications for non-purpose, related to criminal act. And the trade secret, like, called commercial or financial information that belongs to the municipality or board and has monetary, attention, monetary value regarding the burner water update.
Any questions? Uh, questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you, sir.